Thursday, March sixteenth. I have all three selectmen present. I have the town administrator that's present. I have Mr. Lee Martell reporting for the citizens of Dunbar. I have the town clerk here. I have the town moderator here. I have the road agent here. I have a former selectman here. Welcome, everybody. All right, gentlemen, I have two sets of minutes. One we delayed last time, I believe. So I have meeting minutes from the second and the ninth. I'll make a motion to approve the March second, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes as amended.
I'll second that. Justin, you are not in tennies?
You're gonna stand, of course?
Yes.
All in favor?
Stay.
Okay, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March nine, twenty twenty-three as amended.
I'll second those. I'm over steam.
I'm in there.
And as amended. Lean continues. I appreciate the good work of the Republican Secretary. Very happy with her work. Say again? Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of March nine, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that. I'll stand.
All in favor?
Aye. Just to let you know what we just did before the meeting started. We hired a new police officer for the town to fill one of our two vacancies. He's gonna work for a couple of weeks before he goes to academy. Then he goes to academy and we return him and fall. And to the greater academy. I'm very optimistic. And then he'll be back with us probably December starting full-time as patrol officer. He'll have to do a few little more road work to get us here. But the academy is the next step for him after he gets processed a little bit. This little two-one, one-on-one time with an officer on through the year. All right. We're gonna start a public comment now. Back row. Bob, anything? No?
Yeah.
Okay. Town officials, you're on the agenda?
I'm not on the agenda. I didn't come announced.
Okay.
You want me to insert now or you want me to wait?
I can insert now.
It's just a couple of general statements.
Okay.
First, I just wanna give kudos to my plow crew. Last storm, they were excellent. They did a great job all over the wall. There's some pretty good obstacles. At one point, Grapevine Road was a tree across the first significant amount of time. So that route, they could only go down a telly road. They had to come up, go all the way down Thirteen Page Road and come in from the other end, which adds considerable amount of time onto that also with bad weather and everything else. It's a pain in the butt. Mansion Road, there was some similar issues over there where they couldn't get all the way through. So you had to come around, walk the hill, come back, back and forth. So they all worked very hard diligently to get the job done. And I think they did a great job.
I thought so.
We did not, everybody was probably happy and they get things exactly when they wanted. But overall, for what we have to work with a small crew, I think we did a great job.
Chief Wigan did a great job keeping the holes clear, too.
Thank you. No, it seemed that you did the whole thing. There were several roads that, you know, John especially, myself and Pete, we had to actually cut trees to leave the smaller roads, ones that weren't dangerous to cut, catch a wire, these ones that we could handle. But it was, it was a pain. But we survived it. It's all past the smell. And the other thing is, ties into that, having said that, the dirt roads were not closed, gravel roads, and we made a mess of them. There's no way around it. And in the next few days, they're gonna be muddy. They're gonna be soft, we've got melting snow and everything else. We're gonna do the best we can to keep them in as good a shape as we can. But it's just gonna take some time.
Okay.
For them to dry out, so we probably use numerous phone calls. It's not that we're annoying them, we're not technical. But at some point, there's only so much you can do. But they really, they took a beating. And that also is hard on everybody's equipment. If you dig in into the ground.
Into the ground, yeah.
It's, it's not a good scenario all the way around.
We'll get by, we'll fix them up. Before morning, it'll be spring. Well, not spring, summer, right now. It'll be dusty. That'll be the next thing. And that's all I got, just that. And to put the record, congratulations on your reelection.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Another three more years to serve.
Absolutely. Jeff, I just wanna say, you know, thank the highway department and all you guys for doing the good job for the town. I don't think a lot of people realize that are in their homes and don't do the plumbing of the roads.
Yeah.
You know, the fact that you go down a road and you can just barely get to the other end, turn around and come back and there's another four or five inches on the end of the road by the time you get back to it, just a, it's a usually long, long process when you do it for twenty-four hours and you can't keep up with it. And it's a
Well, I snowballed my driveway three times that day and my better half still got, couldn't get up the driveway after the election.
Well, that's the other thing, too, is a lot of stress level because you have all these different things going. If it's just a snowstorm, sometimes you just have that or a few trees down. But everything came together. It was heavy wet snow kept coming. So like I said, they, they really did a great job.
And power was about We were about twenty percent remaining and a lot of people still under the weather with
Yeah, no, I A lot of people still alive.
This morning was about fifty percent.
Yeah, there was a lot of them. Electric company and related contractors in town, there were a lot of them on all the roads. So hopefully they're gonna take care of it.
Well, thank you, what you did and just pass on our thank yous to your crew.
Yeah.
That's all I needed.
Just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Can I bring it back to the board? Okay. We're gonna go right into town business and I'm gonna start off with town clerk.
The results first.
Oh, the results, yes.
The good stuff.
The good stuff.
Really good stuff.
I got one more motion, Jeff, I understand.
And they did it, Dave, Matty? So again, uncontested positions. All the people that were there basically were voted in. I think there was only one write-in that was Alicia Cunningham for the school, school clerk for a three-year term. And she won by a whopping thirteen votes. So again, and obviously the zoning article passed significantly by seventy-one in favor versus twenty-eight opposed to the change in the article. So thank you very much for all your assistance. Just to let you know, so this morning at nine oh six, I got a voicemail message from the Attorney General's office. So they, they had received a call from a Dunbaran resident that was told that the town meeting could not be moved because we are not an S B two town. So the purpose of his call was to inform me that the meeting could have been moved according to a particular R R C. So unfortunately, I was in a, in a meeting. I did return this call and I did indicate to him, I said, you know, all the election officials were well aware that we're not an S B two town. And the decision had been made to continue with the elections and the town meetings at particular day.
I was, I was told and informed that you knew that you got the authority to move, cancel and postpone as you see fit.
Correct. Yep. So I, I made him aware of that, that all the election officials knew that, that, that was the case. My second question was, who told her? Your phone trip, you know?
Right.
Oh, yeah. He told me, he told me so. So, and I said, and my last message to him was, he has any need for further discussion, please feel free to, to reach out to me. So, you know, I just let you gentlemen know that I got a phone call.
Yep.
I got a phone call.
Similar?
Same. I, I had transcript made of the message, so I got it straight. But yeah, it was same as John got.
And what was the state? They just wanna make sure that we had our act together?
Because somebody, yeah.
Yeah.
As soon as someone calls, they, they have to pursue that. That is their job.
Investigate, investigate it.
Yes.
Correct, yeah. So, so my point is, I just want, we all need to be on the same page or be distributing the same information.
It's not because we're, we're not an S B two town. Even an S B two town could cancel there. You know? So it's kind of been something whoever told of that, you know? And if, and my concern is if she called town hall and, you know, our own people don't know it. And we're, you know, yeah, we're, you know, you guys are a bunch of idiots.
We were pretty all closed up here, too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't, I haven't heard anybody to say anything about S B two town.
I think it's been, the last time I heard that term was maybe five, six years ago when it was brought up and it was turned down by the town.
Right. Somebody not even connected to the town.
Oh, yeah.
It could have been my friend Sally.
Absolutely, oh, yeah.
He celebrates you, who do all that.
My, my message sent a town official, so.
I did get a call from one resident that said that he had heard that the town meeting was canceled. But the voting had still gone on and I reassured him through text that both were still going on and nothing had canceled at all. They chose not to come up anyway, but that was on their own decision at that point.
Yeah.
Can I just speak on that? Because I, I heard some of the, the calls coming through. But I think what people were looking at was your office was closed on the red bar in the home website saying you're closed today and tomorrow. And I think that they were, that's the only thing, because I was looking all over the websites to try to see whether, what they would have been seeing, reading. And I couldn't make anything else.
I think you're right. I think they might have seen that the office, that was the fifteenth.
Yeah, yesterday.
But I, I think they just maybe saw Dunbaran School closed or Dunbaran Town Office closed. Because you closed partway through the day, right?
Correct, there was no electricity up here. So, you know.
So, so this office was open for a while, at least.
Yeah.
But yeah, and I did go on just to double check because Lean said I didn't see it. So I went on W M U R and they still have their list of who they posted as postponing the election and/or the meeting. Dunbaran was not on that list. So I think that the resident who contacted you perhaps saw Dunbaran connected with something else.
Yeah, school or something.
School or, or something.
So, yeah, again, you just, you know, I think it went well. Nobody else, no. But again, just, I guess a lesson learned and maybe, you know, should it occur next year? But again, you can't, you know, some people just get it in their mind and they
It only happens on years that I get elected.
It's true.
Well, based on the last term.
Well, the thing is, remember the weather said eight to twelve. And I said twelve to twenty-four.
Oh, yeah. I was gonna say, based on the information that was given and you planned on it, it wasn't a bad decision.
Well, if you look at the storm the week before, it was a lot less than what they had said, so.
If you do postpone it, how much time do you have to? You have to do it a certain number of days, hours before the actual meeting, I wonder?
Again, so that the, the meeting itself was twelve hour, or excuse me, would it have to been six o'clock the evening before?
Right.
Yeah, so that's a pretty significant amount of time.
You had to make that decision then.
Yeah. You had to call it one way or the other the day before.
Correct. So again, you know, based on the information.
Absolutely.
Most of the residents in Dunbar are pretty hardy and Yeah, the thing is, I would have recommended postponing it if there was something, anything controversial on the ballot.
Absolutely.
Or contested elections, numerous contested elections or a major bond we're gonna vote on. And it would hurt some people's pocketbooks or wallets. I, I would have recommended appropriately.
Yep.
But the thing is, there was, some people always said, why am I voting? There's no, there's no opposition to anyone on this ballot. It was a boring ballot.
And, and I did not use that as a factor, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, well, we can only advise you.
I, no, yeah, I get it, so.
When you make a decision, we support you.
Yeah, and, and like I said, if there's a need for, for me to attend and have this little discussion with a resident, feel free to, to reach out to me and we'll have it.
Yeah, by the way, that one resident who came in late, he needed a little more explain, personal explanations.
Yes, yeah.
Took my time, explained it to her. She felt very, I, I felt she left more comfortable.
Yep.
She didn't realize that the police department is part of my budget. But she said, I fully support the police and that's part of my budget, too.
Yeah.
There you go. And I, I explained to her that the three main driving factors which drove up the budget. I explained to them all. One was we voted on last year. Another one was maintenance for our three buildings and environmental impact of our gasoline. Uh, this pumping station. And lastly, a small amount was made for material supplies, compensation, insurance, electricity and even removing trash that drove up the eighteen cents impact. And so there was a total ninety cent impact of those of the three drivers that drove everything up ninety cents.
And realistically, once you've taken and applied the surplus, which we did, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, the balance on the increase is pretty much the road bond, which would have been part of a warrant article anyway, so.
And the roads went into our budgets to
And looking great.
Yep.
Was our plan.
Yep.
Which was part of the overall.
And a lot of people, a lot of people don't realize that every year we vote on a hundred grand. I don't value putting it to the other one, a warrant. Well, this year it was no hundred grand. It was in my side, the, the bond pay.
Yeah, you're the bad guy.
I'm the bad guy. And so when you put, if I didn't have that bond I had to pay for, my budget would have been like seven percent versus fourteen percent high. Okay, but, but overall, thank you for doing a good job.
It's far enough. So we're all on the same page?
I think I'm on that much. Voting in the town meeting worked well?
I think it sort of is, well, yeah.
Did you do it in town at the town meeting and I could have helped with what?
Thirty-six voters at the meeting.
Without including
Let's include everybody who voted. That was, that's just from supervisors of the checklist. They always, anybody who got the purple voting card? There were thirty-six. There were sixty-seven at the school meeting, where, of course, they had an even bigger budget. Oh, they didn't note that they did it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming and sharing the information with us and social media had some
I don't even wanna talk about.
I, thank you, thank you. It's, but it means I, I tell you, it's If you wanna have a laugh, go read some of them.
I don't even, yeah, I don't even want to waste my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna continue on general appointments. The appointments of duties for next, next term. I asked Lean to make up a little checklist first so we could move on with that. Okay. Why don't we go down through and make a motion on all that once after we've
Absolutely, after we've discussed and hashed it out, okay?
Mike has stated just a little earlier, I asked about front and he has to stay as chairman for one more year. It's his final year.
If I don't, unless I run again.
But even if you do run, you're not gonna be chair again.
That is correct.
Little horse trading going on.
Yeah.
So, um
It's on record now.
I think we're gonna check that off here as
As it go, same.
And I'll stay the co-chair unless Justin would like to do it.
I'll do it if you want.
Yeah. Justin becomes co-chair. Justin?
I'll stay planning board.
Yep. Now, I've been to ex-official visits, one controversy on one certain road.
That's still in place.
Okay. Okay, highway saved it.
I'll stay there.
Okay. Joint loss, no appointment needed, but Justin, you've been doing a good job there.
Yeah.
I'll stay on the town home restoration committee to finish that up.
Okay.
Tiff, I'll stay on.
All right. And thank you for your chicken. Yeah?
Town force rep, I'll stay there and try and get a treat out of the shit.
I'm, I'm okay with that. We meet four times a year.
Police department, Mike, you said you'd like to
Yeah, I like to be the police department rep.
Okay. Town offices, any? Any on that one?
Okay.
Highway department, is any of us?
Okay.
Transfer station are up with me?
I can do it if you want.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Patrick is for Conkers Regional Waste. Energy Committee, Mike has been doing a great job.
I think we have to share the experience.
I'm not sure they're gonna like me on that.
Oh, they will. I'll make sure they will.
All right.
I'm sure that's Only time when I really think.
The good thing, Dave, is they do a lot of Zoom meetings.
Yeah, it's all Zoom.
Oh, that's gonna be great.
I'll be Zooming. I can't even get my pitch up on Zoom. Too big for the screen, you gotta get a wide screen. I'll stay on the history.
Okay. Capital improvement plan, I don't think I did anything this past year on that, except read, read some of the stuff.
Yeah, we just started the whole process.
It's just on Dave's doing it.
You want to stay on there, Dave?
Yeah, I think Dave should, should finish what he started.
Yeah, he's gonna finish it.
And just for the record, we al, we always, the planning board, we kept Justin on for the public's record because planning board is, meets once a month and it takes almost a year to learn what the heck is going on in the planning board.
I have a
And so that's, that's why you're staying on. Yeah, okay.
You gonna remember who we put, what committee you were up?
I don't think we changed too often much.
No. Please, please send transfer.
I gotta get ready to do some graphs for me.
All right, moving on. All right, second floor policy, we were, we've been bantering that back and forth. And I think it's what I want tonight, no decisions tonight, but I wanna get some ideas, some bullet ideas. If you have any, or we can defer it one more week. I understand we asked, some members of the board asked to have a little more time to think something's over. But I threw out some bullet points about two weeks ago. We're going to defer, but the thing is, one thing we can, we can talk about now is, what are we talking about? Town entities and do we charge a usage fee? Do we have a non-refundable deposit? Do we have a non-refundable deposit? I've been, I've been in one extreme, I've been at the other extreme, and I've come to the middle a little bit. And I listened to some members of the renovate, of the renovation committee. I've talked to them at town at the election and I've been, Dave's been through my ear off. And so with one position, so I've, I've come to the middle. Thing is, I view this as an investment and, and we put a big investment of, of people's tax dollars in this building. I want it to be used by the town. However, the thing is, I was thinking, maybe we should charge something as a usage fee. While Dave was being caught, being the opposite to me, saying, a lot of four one Cs don't have money that you can just, every year they can dish out
Five one ones.
Five one C. And they can dish out money. So I see that, but I say as a minimum, if we don't have a usage fee, they gotta at least have a deposit for against damages and cleaning where they give us a deposit and they leave it to a point where Lean's gotta get a crew up there to clean it up before the next person uses it, taking out trash, sweep floors, they leave it, the toilets are overflowing, whatever. They're gonna lose some of their, they're gonna lose some of the deposit. That was, I, I think, if you're gonna have a fee, if you don't wanna have a, a non-refundable fee, at least have a deposit where they can get it back if they leave it in a condition they accept the free use. And if they leave it in bad use or disrepair, they're gonna be responsible for that. And so I was, Justin, what do you think about that? I was, I was also set to charge like maybe, depending upon how size, have two sizes, small and, small and large. A large group you pay one fee, non-refundable, and a small group pay non-refundable. But I, I hate to get a little bit, because it is a town property, it belongs to the citizens. It's not a money-making operation, but I don't wanna see that investment be spoiled by a few crappy committees that get up there and they don't respect it. So they lose their deposit, it may not come, be invited back. I'll leave it up to the folks in the general.
Well, I think you, you guys already, whoever made the second floor use policy, Harvey.
It was a re-draft, those are just people's ideas. Our job is to
I'm gonna read it to you.
Okay.
If you don't remember what it says, it says, exceptions can occur to any behavior on an as-needed basis. Large parties, more than fifty anticipated participants, will need to pay a security deposit as well as a non-refundable custodial fee.
That's, that's to where I was
That's what's in the, on the draft.
Yep. Dave, you wanna talk to that?
Yeah. This is my thought. That addition is part of a town building now. That addition was done by the voters of the town, not by this board or any other board. It was accepted by all of the voters to become town, town property. If somebody wanted to come and use this room, we don't charge them anything. If it was allowed use. A lot of these same boards that are in this room will be using that up there as well. All the, all the people that are allowed to use that building up there on the second floor right now by this policy are town of Dunbaran residents and/or town of Dunbaran entities. In other words, there's a benefit to the town, whether it's for the kids on Boys Club or it's gotta be a Dunbaran entity, it's no outside of town. And I think when you look at these policy uses that are from some of these other towns, like even warehouse one, it's fifty dollars use when you use their town hall for Brian LeShawn, let's say. But our use is our town entities. And what I thought we would do is start out without charging anything. Whereas if we see somebody abusing it, we bring them to the forefront and make them, you know, pay for it at that time. But by taking a deposit from everybody in recite, you know, or giving it back or keeping a deposit on file for like somebody that wants to use it once a month, I just think it creates a lot of work for the girls up front when they have them or don't have them, or do they give them back or not give them back? They give us a check, do we give them their check back? Or do we give them a town check back? It just creates a lot of work for these guys where, you know, the cleaning of that entryway is gonna be done weekly, just like this building gets cleaned. We don't charge somebody to walk in this door and come up to your counter and, you know, that cleaning is part of, it's a town building, that's why we have to clean it. It's part of our maintenance on the, on the overall building. And so if somebody abuses it, we're gonna know because we're gonna have a key code of who's going in that building on whatever date. And so we're gonna know if somebody is abusing that. And then I think we can, you know, pull them into the next electance meeting and hash it out. Either they're gonna pay the next time they use the building or they're not gonna be allowed to use it anymore. And that's why I want the power to stay in Lean's office on who uses that building and not be part of the library or anything else, because we have control of that building.
And
I, I don't think that's an issue, I think that's a given, that we're keeping that in town. So that's where I'm coming, because the townspeople have paid for that building through their taxes. And they have the right, I think, to use it and it's all Dunbaran entities. I think when we go outside of town, if something, something happens and they're
But the thing is
doing something
From, from a patron behavior policy, all we're doing is asking them is, we're gonna let you use that building free. If you mess it up, you're not gonna get your deposit back. If you do, if you follow the rules, which you're gonna implement, like room sweep, take out, you take out trash or you bring in, take it out, leave the lights off, leave it relatively clean, whatever. You're gonna get your money back, so you use it free, which is in the spirit of what you're saying. I'm not saying a non-refundable deposit, I'm saying load the deposit for them. So in the event that there's a problem up there, well, you know, you can invite someone to this meeting and they may, we may never see them come in, they may, you know, be hemming and hawing. But when you have a hundred dollar deposit, well, thank you very much, you left the room so poor, you're not getting it. We documented, we picked this or whatever. Lean gets to put that in general treasury. The general fund. I just feel like, you, you take care, no problem, it's free to you. If you abuse it, it's gonna be a penalty for paying. Justin?
I'm just trying to think about the deposit here because even if you have someone put a deposit, say it's either fifty dollars or a hundred dollars, is that even gonna pay? Is that gonna be enough of a consequence for something?
It's called a little skin in the game.
I understand.
In other words, if, if it means so much that they don't care of their trash and leave four, three barrels or three bags of trash up there and we have to take them out. They know the policy, they got it well delineated in front of them. they know the policy, they got it well delineated in front of them, and they decide, I'm not touching that, that's their problem. Hey, if it's a hundred dollars, you're gonna take out three bags of trash, that's okay, we'll take care of it, you just lost a hundred dollars. Oh, you wanna use it again? We, we can, uh, say, nay, nay, you didn't even charge it a hundred dollars. The thing is, uh, I think fifty dollars is too small, I think a hundred dollars is enough of a deposit where, and we can address it, I, I think, if this, uh, and we developed this policy, it's a living document, let's say, one year, we said, what are we even collecting this policy money for? The townspeople are perfect, they leave this place pristine, well, maybe we drop it after a year. We revisit, say, drop it after a year.
We could also with the other way, and just let them use it, and if it doesn't work out, then we implement that.
Right, but it's, it's much harder to implement, ask them for money after they've been using it free all year, and then now we're asking for money, well, then.
Well, certainly, it's not, and we just tell Lean to charge them.
I, I know, I'd rather, I'd rather just be a little cautious and preserve, in other words, uh, I, I mean, the walls look great, the entryway looks great, I just hate to have it get all screwed up.
It's kinda like it's gonna be used.
Oh, I know, but the thing is, uh, it's.
I don't wanna see it get ruined, we either leave it, we gotta get a lot of time over there.
It was, it's the same thing, like, uh, someone said that to me the other day, someone in this meeting, said, oh, the elevator, we can use an elevator as a freight elevator. I said, wrong answer, it is not gonna be used as a freight elevator. The only reason we put that elevator is there one purpose, for handicapped individual to make, to get up to the second floor. That's the only purpose, reason why we couldn't use it before, was because we had no handicapped access. And all of a sudden, they wanna use it for freight? No way. It's gonna be, it's only can hold two people, and it's gonna be used for handicapped individuals. And I think we came to a consensus that it's gonna have a handicap sign on it. And I don't want the, like, let's say, a youthful physician gets to use it, and there's two adults here, and the two adults are doing, conducting the meeting, or just getting set for the meeting, and then you have little kids going up and down the elevator all day, what, before the meeting starts, and then the elevator breaks, what happens? That means it's shut down for the rest of the community for three months while it's getting, gets repaired.
I did, um, I did check with the state, um, elevator inspector today, or signage, I said, does anybody put signage on their handicap only, or anything like that? And he said, some places do, although I won't tell you, he says, that elevator is an elevator, it's a little limited, um,
Right.
Limited use, or whatever, because of the number of trips that they planned to have. But he said it's a full elevator, it's not a handicap-only elevator, he says, it is an elevator, fourteen hundred pounds, max weight, they tested it to that weight today.
Right.
Um, he said, so, as far as the state goes, that is an elevator for general use, not just.
Right, but the thing is, I, I view it as an investment, though, and the thing is, um, the only thing that we cleared us from using that building before was not having a handicap access, and once that goes away, for whatever reason, it shuts down the building again.
If you ask them that question, let's say the elevator's underwater. You can't use the upstairs, going up the, uh.
I didn't have to, not only 'cause I don't think, as long as you have the facilities, you know, whether it's up for repair or whatever, I don't think it stops the use at that time. You don't see any building that you have, a public building, if something's broken, they stop the use of the building.
Yeah, but I had to have a one handicap person complain to us, and, I couldn't attend the meeting because I couldn't get up the staircase, and I was stuck there. And then we have an, uh, lawsuit against the town.
Just so you people are aware, the elevator, um, does not operate during a fire, there's a, means paper, so.
We should have signs on that, say that.
Okay. I, I'm not gonna ask for a decision on it tonight, but the thing is, I want you to think about it, Justin, reflect upon the, the piece. I think we have to come to a consensus sooner or later, probably next meeting, I, I have a, a decision being made.
Can I just give it a hand?
Absolutely.
I think that the community, that, uh, members, committees that are involved in the town on a daily basis will be conscientious of using that space, it's when we use it for that baby shower, or the yoga people.
They're not loved yet.
And, you know, so I don't know that we're gonna.
But the thing is, I, I like to point out that that draft of the use policy came back, came from the renovation, I mean, the, uh, the renovation committee. And so I, I, I put a little respect on their opinion, too, so that's a public input right there. And we're actually cutting it back a little bit based on their information.
But can I also say that by your recommendation, uh, the ones that have the reoccurring meetings, like once a month, they're gonna check with us, they're gonna look at our calendar, it's open, they wanna have a meeting, they're gonna be going in and out, in and out, in and out, in and out, every month, and we'll be handling a deposit to return, a deposit to return.
I thought, I know we had talked about you holding the check, if that, if that was the case of prior.
Where you, I mean, you put them in the safe, you were cheap-honing one day, where are they, it just, uh.
The whole, the whole point is that there really has to be some thought put into the fees, whereas if it's a regular group, garden club, you have an email in there that they're looking for once a month for the eight months. I don't wanna have to have my office say, I'm gonna give you your check back, I'd rather hold the check, put it in the bank, and then if we have one month, three months from now that it needs cleaning, I have a deposit for that group. We're still trying to iron out the whole managing of the policy.
Take some comment from the public?
Please.
Okay, absolutely.
I agree with Dave. I think you oughta go for a year or something, and see how it goes. I, I know what you're saying, Mike, and it's not a bad idea, but I think it's gonna be a, a workkeeping nightmare. And then, if something does happen, you're almost gonna have to have someone look and police it after the activity. Because, you know, human nature is, oh, we didn't do that, the group of forested. And, you know, I'm not talking, if it's something serious, and I think you're gonna have to just absorb it in a budget, there's gonna be incidental cleaning that has to be done. People are gonna burn on their feet when they go up there.
Absolutely.
We can, you can have carry-in, carry-out, they have it everywhere, but there's still gonna be a soda bottle, or a plastic water bottle up on the window sill. There's somebody who's gonna forget, just leave, not, not intentionally, and some of it is intentionally. But I think we're dealing with our own residents, and they're gonna be pretty respectful of that. I think when we go off to the other, other, other sector, or whether it's on the town people, or the wedding shower people, or the birthday party, or.
And, uh, if we get to that.
Yeah, if you ever come to that, I, I would say.
I'm bored of doing it, something when we get to that.
But I, I think you just gotta bite the bullet on the incidental cleaning, and maybe figure in your budget. I feel, we have, we're gonna use the transfer station, 'cause this is the biggest one, we have a lot of fees at the transfer station, to get rid of stuff. We got a budget to throw our trash away, and then we have to give another fee to throw our stuff away, and I see it go in the dumpster. If it didn't go in the dumpster, I wouldn't get quite as wound up, but when I see it go in the dumpster, it's like, I'm already paying to get rid of that. So that irritates me. We have a policy, the highway department, we get a lot of calls from residents, can I get some sand? I tell them, yes, you can. You pay for the sand. If you wanna come get some sand, you can get it, and I look at it the same way with a lot of these others, the taxpayers pay for it. And I just hate, I hate to feed everybody, all the time.
You're telling me it's on the side of the road.
Someone's gonna be like a slap in the face after they approved it as part of, okay, we're gonna go along with this budget, let's get this with townspeople, then you wanna fan the desk, 'cause you go to, to the, to the, you need to use that building over there, the school building?
Yep.
No fees associated with that, and there's a lot of.
But we can't use it anymore.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, there's no fee there, you know, they just have the custodians come in and clean out that same job, you know?
But I just, I just, I, I turned into a, I'm just gonna say this, like a be happy thing.
Okay.
And it's like, come on, man, you know, it's, it's a town building, the town funded it, and right now.
And we are restricting it to only town residents.
Yes, but I think that's their skin in the game, I guess, like, I give our residents more credit, they're gonna be abusive.
I say, try and see how it goes, if you find there's a problem, like Dave said, you can always implement a town rule. And there's normal wear and tear, that's gonna be a.
Comments, any more comments?
No, I'm just, I'm gonna go back to the community center. They had no fees, then they went to a hundred dollar fee, 'cause it was being abused. And then you got a, uh, an amount that the town kicked in for the use of the cafeteria side, because people were abusing it, and that's why we started throwing in a thousand dollars every year, which isn't that much, but I'm just, so when you're deliberating what you're gonna do, there are people that were on the side of, let anybody that's in town, any town organization, use that at no cost, and then they kind of decided that maybe they should put a deposit down in the event that something did happen, and one other person said to me, well, if something happens, they can't use it anymore. Well, one person of an organization can cost the organization the opportunity to use it. And there's another thing that you're gonna be held accountable for. While it passed at a town meeting, it's not everybody in town that wanted to see that happen. So now that they see it happen, if, if the cleaning and the stuff gets out of control, you're gonna be held accountable by those people who say, see, this is costing us more money. So I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing these things, this, this stuff out there for you to consider when you're trying to deliberate what you're gonna do.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be like an amoeba first couple of years. It's gonna move all over the place, you'll have to, uh, keep an eye on what's going on.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I think, uh, any document, any policy that comes up, may change six months from now.
I also think it's good to have some rules sometimes.
Yep.
Because if you don't, as Jeff just said, now, it's human nature to do whatever you can get away with.
There is, uh, two pages, even if there are rules.
Rules are made to be broken.
Yeah, there is two pages of rules, Kevin.
Yeah, we're, we're coming up with some rules, like, the elevator was my concern, to me, uh, I can deal with cleaning, but I can't deal, that elevator took so long to get, and so long to get inspected, and I just, I hate to have it spoiled for.
And again, if you, if you, if you notice us being, I don't wanna say abused, but used improperly, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Then maybe you gotta put a sign up and say it's off limits.
Right.
I did, uh, I did ask the state, I said, and, uh, the elevator guy, I said, you know, one of our concerns, Mike had brought up, is, you know, kids going upstairs, if they come to the library, go up and down, they are being watched by people as well, but if the kids load up, he says, I wanna tell you one thing, they might think it's fun once, but that elevator goes so slowly, they're gonna use the stairs.
He said they might try it once, but they're gonna get out of that thing. Okay.
Just one, just one more. If you did have a, a refundable deposit, I don't think that's out of the realm, 'cause if people are doing the right thing, they're gonna get it back, and whether it's a garden club, or historical society, is if they put a deposit down, they can say, can, we're gonna be using it, so leave it there until you need it, and then if something happens, let us know, 'cause then you can assess if there is gonna be a problem.
Right, but, but, those two organizations, believe it or not, those are probably two I'm not worried about. As an example, I know, I, I.
And this example, you don't know who's gonna use it, but if, you know, if they carry and carry out, that's fine, and it doesn't make you, you don't have to charge them, but at least if something does happen, it could just, it could simply be somebody broke one of the latches to the door, or whatever.
I, I, Dave, I, I can, I can concur with that, no, no usage fee at all initially, but then let's say they, they leave it trashed, well, if you wanna use it again, you're gonna have to put a deposit down, in other words, deposit to be determined if, if needed, because we're an irresponsible organization, they may, maybe.
I don't recall that, Rob.
Yeah.
Like, just, uh, run of the year, and then if we decide there's an issue.
But I agree with Lean, you gotta, you gotta be vigilant and keep on the, you can't just say, go use it, go use it.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody, I don't know who that lucky individual's gonna be, Lean. But walk through the building.
You know, just.
You gotta delegate, right?
Right, don't you?
You know, it's only, it's only three days a week.
Well, we're working on that.
If someone uses it Saturday night, while getting inspected until Wednesday.
I'm sure you guys are smart enough to work that over in your department.
But I do, I, I think that's, I think that's as much of a key thing as what you're talking about. Someone has to, I wouldn't say babysit, for lack of a better term.
Initially.
Yeah, to see how it goes, and feel it out, and, and, you know, maybe we're overthinking.
True, but the thing is, we, I mean, nothing happens over there, we're on my inspector's.
I think we should, uh, checklist.
Yeah.
Things that need to be done.
We're gonna make definite lists.
Definitely rules.
Yeah, rules and a checklist, like.
And the person using it can fill that out and give it to the town, or leave it in their mailbox.
I think whoever fills it out should sign.
Right, absolutely, right.
Whatever that organization is that represented.
I have, I have one other idea, since we're talking about this, I'm gonna run it by the group.
Yeah.
My thought is, so it's not up to Lean, first-time users come in front of the board of selectmen. Garden club comes in one time in front of us, we give them the permission to use the room, here's the rules and regulations, we want you to read them.
Understand.
We're gonna hold you, so it's not all on you, first-time users, whether.
Um, you know, it's funny you say that, but when we did the video taping, we had people sign waivers. In this case here, you could have them sign this policy, they sign off on it, we have a coffee.
The chair, co-chair, so the first-time user.
Yep.
Say it's a Boys Club, they come in to see you, we'd like to do the town hall, okay, first-time users have to go to a selectmen's meeting. Then we can hit them up with the policy and have them sign it right then, and.
I don't think we need to go that extent, especially if we're doing, if we're doing every other week in the summertime, you guys aren't gonna be around to go through that.
But, and we're talking about one time, one time.
I'm talking about first-time users only.
But what I wanna do, though, is, when we develop this policy, if we have a checklist, the whole office is going up there to inspect it. We're all gonna get the same training, we're all gonna hear the same thing from the selectmen, and everyone's gonna understand what is expected and what they're looking for, so that you know, someone's not going in there and saying, well, I missed this, or.
Okay. But, and, and you have a checklist, like, then your, uh, the policy's bulletized form, it's not hidden in a paragraph?
It's supposed to be by the door when they walk out, right?
Yeah.
I mean, before you leave.
Part of the building sounds easier than it used to be either, and I'll walk you guys through that, but, you know, the lighting, different lights need to be off, and different lights need to be on.
Yeah.
Some stay on all the time, so.
Okay, I'll walk you guys all through that. Okay, uh, but as far as the policy, I think, uh, I want you to do your homework, look at the draft policy, come up with some, anything that's missing, then we can bulletize it and give it to Lean to develop it, I think it'll be done in two weeks.
And you should send me your ideas, I can, in a draft.
Right.
I mean, if you like what's there, we're not going any further than what we already have.
Right, we'll take some, we'll just have to rearrange.
Rearrange something, yeah. 'Cause there's, uh, on one of these, it says that, that's gonna be on the town website, to get on there, so you're gonna take that out.
Right, we have reservations, we're gonna be in person.
I like the idea of first user, too, that's something to consider.
Yeah.
I just think, one time, correct me if I'm.
As soon as, uh, waste the day of completion.
We are almost there, what are we waiting on now?
We need to decide, you want to do it now, or lean, or what are we supposed to?
Say again?
You wanna go and do it now, or you wanna go into the.
Uh, well, we're, we're not from the, we're done with the policy, we, we just got homework on the policy, but I think in fairness, now, since we're, since we're talking about it, why don't you guys talk about it now?
Okay. I towed the, um, guys for the elevator up the hill, Mills Hill, one of the trucks was stuck on our storm day on town meeting. I got one of them there at seven, and the other one was stuck on the hill, we finally got them up the hill. The state inspector made it between eight and eight-thirty, I think, and we loaded all their equipment in, they unloaded the fourteen hundred pounds in for the test, got all ready to go, and, uh, we lost power. So that, we rescheduled. So I rescheduled to Thursday, which is today, come up here again in the morning, and, uh, got all set up, got loaded, did all their tests, all their functions, and, um, I was gonna ask the board later on, but I'll ask them now. Pro Technologies is a company we chose to go to for the elevator monitoring, and we did that because Pro Technologies does all of our other buildings here. The elevator company told me it would take two months to get this work through. Um, so I started on it a couple months ago, working with Pro Technologies and going through it, and, um, come to find out today, they are trying to work through it, but the elevator code now requires, um, video monitor as well as phone. So if somebody is having a heart attack, they can see him in the elevator, if somebody is hearing impaired, they can see him in there, and a screen will come up. Well, what I found out is, um, they are sending, Pro Technologies is using another company that monitors, and we called their, everything was through, we got the flooring passed, everything with the state inspection is perfect. We could not call that company up and consecutively have somebody on the other end tell us that they can see us. And you can pull a SmartView up, so we know it's working. So, it's something that they wanna do in the future, I think, but I think the stakeholders of the company want it to happen, and they haven't explained it to any worker. So we have the emergency call go in, we state it's not an emergency, we're here with the state elevator inspector, we're gonna check out the functions, and they're supposed to be able to tell you the address of the place, see it up on the screen, ask you, you know, if you need help, or what services you need, and they can get us up on screen. We tried it four different times, I placed probably fifty phone calls into the three different companies that need to go through. And I've been doing this now steadily for the last two weeks.
Isn't that firewall thing you're thinking, or is it something else?
Nothing to do, all those firewalls that the IT guy thought we needed, aren't anything that has anything to do with it. He doesn't have to open up any ports or firewalls, it's just like looking on the internet, so that part was all easy, and we know, 'cause you pull it up on SmartView, and you can look at us in the elevator, so we know that everything is working, just the company hasn't trained their employees, and our account for Dunbarton hasn't been set up properly. They gave me two companies that do it day in and day out, when we did the elevator, and I stayed with Pro Technologies only, 'cause they have the rest of our town buildings. I think it's time to go to the other companies, I mean, done like that, and, uh.
When can we get a re-inspection?
He said, I think they'll come next Thursday.
Oh, good, good, so I, we need to act quickly then.
Yeah, so I was gonna ask the other board members to make that move, uh, we'll get a separate bill, but it's just another monitoring company. The monitoring is very, uh, it's only for emergency use, I think our other, they would address three hundred and thirty-one dollars a year or something. It's minimal, but, uh, we're trying to use a company that has untrained personnel, and the state inspector said, even if they answered it once in the four times, and got to all the information, he said, I wouldn't feel comfortable that somebody could have a heart attack in there, and I signed off on this. So if he doesn't feel comfortable with the company, I said, we need to.
I think so, too.
So they gave us, sent them alarms as the other company, known in which, I have the name and number for the contact there.
You wanna do that, Paul?
Yeah.
I think it's a consensus of all of you.
Yes.
Yeah, they need it.
So that being said, um, Chicoine cleaned that building last weekend, spotless. Not that it's spotless now, because all the elevator guys and stuff have been through there, but it was all cleaned up and spotless, I inspected it after, it was all very nicely done. Uh, that being said, we need to take over the, um, the cleaning of that entryway, even though, you know, some elevator inspectors and some people will be in and out of it. The painters upstairs have nothing to do with the addition part of it, so. The painters upstairs have nothing to do with the addition part of it, so, um.
That's our nickel.
Yeah. And so we need to take over that cleaning and start that up, so we're cleaning it regular.
We need to contact the, uh, the company we currently.
So would you recommend a cleaning for just the foyer and then a cleaning for an event, or, I mean?
That's what, that's what I would do, and, uh, what I would do is clean in for the foyer weekly, like we do here, you know? Once a week, go in there, and, um, I think the room cleaning could probably just be, you know, wiped down with those things once a week as well.
That's gonna be at least thirty bucks a week.
Well, this is one fifty a week. So.
I wouldn't be surprised, but I can ask.
This is a lot bigger here. We could try and do it every two weeks on the big room.
So I'll ask them what it will cost.
Let, let, maybe they're gonna need to walk the way and see.
Yeah.
I do know one thing, it's a, it's a different building, it's, like, this has some vacuuming, because that's tile, it almost needs to be like a white squiff.
Damp, damp.
Damp, and then the stairs are rubber mats, so those need to be hand mocked or, you know, marked like that, and the floor on top is that laminate CVT there, so that needs to be mocked up, so. The only, um, vacuuming will be the drop rugs and then the carpet in the elevator. The bathrooms are both tile. So it's gonna take a little longer, I think, than this building maybe, only cause there's two bathrooms in there, this only has one. And then it's more mopping, and it's gonna be dried up afterwards, and when it's dried up wicked, so. You know, like those squishes are just pulling down or something.
Damn, yeah.
So should I ask them what the cost on the foyer will be, or just in general, see what they ask?
No, do the foyer with the bathrooms.
Yeah.
Once a week, and then do it every two weeks on the big room, just, uh, might be down the floor.
Well, how much with the in and out, all the curb for the big room, as, as we need?
All the curb.
In other words, if we need it once a week, we need it once a week, depending upon how, how much activity we've been there.
Okay.
Yeah, I, you'd have to have access, she, she needs access to second, to walk it through.
I guess, how do you do it?
I've, I've left it unlocked.
Okay, but there's gonna be a key, and?
No, there'll be a key for that door. Master key, I had to take the keypad off there, cause the keypad wouldn't function with the older devices.
So we're using the?
Keypads are for going in upstairs to the room and into Mary's.
Oh, that's what the keypads are, so even if they gain access with a master key to the.
You still need the keypads.
You still have code to get it.
And that's how you're gonna know who's using the.
You get a color here.
Yeah.
If you don't want to pursue that.
I'll go through all that, right?
Okay. I, I just got a question, kind of like, a little bit of tension. What's gonna be operational, just the entryway or is the whole facility?
What do you mean by that?
Is the upstairs completely done as far as?
Oh, no, I didn't finish.
Okay, oh, I thought you.
No, we gotta head it into a different direction.
There's just that addition is gonna be usable.
Yep, so the addition is done, there were two plates on the front entry door, they came in today.
Yep.
Um, Bobby Schneider from Chicoine's been notified, I believe he's scheduled to go on Monday. Cover plates. Uh, cover plates for the front entry.
Okay.
So those, um, those are there, I'll do another inspection with the, um, architect, or what we next week. And she'll say they're gonna touch up this paint and that, and touch up the rails.
Will the manager, will Chicoine's manager be there with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, so after the, they'll give us a substantial completion report from the, uh, architect, and then we'll be ready to use. Now, Mary's is already, as we know.
Yeah.
And she's gonna let you know what day, probably next week, we'll move her box.
Okay.
And, um.
Let this go away a little bit.
And then the upstairs has all been drywalled, taped, sanded, primed, and now has been painted one coat, I imagine tomorrow they'll finish the second coat.
So that's part two.
Ceilings, yeah, part two, and the ceilings are all done. Um, Alan Byer is up to doing some electrical. Um, but he's got that pretty well underway as well, he added some light lights and some lighting.
Really, the only thing that's gonna be usable is when your entryway and the stairs and the elevator.
And, and Mary's, yes.
Yeah, but the upstairs room won't be ready for function, functional use.
Uh, the only thing we're waiting for in that is we wanna have a work session, which we're gonna probably put on the town, to sand the floors. Instead of paying for them, Tom Caddo must have taken, uh, get a group of people to read.
Yeah, no, no, I, I just saw, all the targets, all the additional.
Yep.
That's it, so that's.
But, um, um, the, the main area there, Jeff, I wanna say within a month or so, we should be using that too.
Just was curious, I didn't really know.
No, it's, we waited long enough for it, and I think Mary's been very accommodating in the, the process.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, I was just wondering.
What we were, what we were opening up for use.
It isn't much.
If you recall, though, if you recall, if we go back about maybe five meetings, Mike made an estimate of April first.
Yeah.
It's coming, it's almost gonna make it.
No, we're gonna get done before that.
Okay.
I said April first, my prediction, Leo has a take, uh, April first.
Yeah, I, I just.
I just went bragging rights.
You know, I know, that's fine, I just didn't know what, how the, where the upstairs.
Well, I didn't wanna open the upstairs to use.
In the winter.
Chairs all laid out, and then have to pick them up every time, so.
And the, and the cosmetic things, and some of it's like, some lining has been changed, the, the, they're gonna bring some new chair seating in there, they're gonna, they're gonna keep some of the.
All this stuff that's going in.
They're gonna keep some of the old seating for historical purposes.
All the sides?
Yes.
So right now, so right now, the, um, Casals paid for the stage, lighting, AV, screen, holdout.
So that's.
And all that, so that guy's gonna come in and stall that right out to the painting stuff. Uh, so the drywall and painting are done, um.
Nothing to do with.
Sometime the floor will be done, whether it's before the guy does the AV work or after, the floor will be sanded.
Concealed. Nice.
We talked about not doing the flooring and trying to do a fundraiser for it, but the flooring doesn't look like it's ever been finished there. And I talked to friend Mullen about it, and he said, they used to put like some oil on it when they danced to, you know, clean it up.
Isn't that picture there?
Yeah, so, um, our thoughts are, we wanna, we wanna do the flooring, so Tom, uh, Casal, come up with an idea of, uh, you know, having a work party together, he's done several floors before, and wants to get a group of people from Dunbar together and do the floors. I did get two estimates on the floor, one was nineteen nine and one was, um, twelve thousand.
What was it?
Nineteen nine, nineteen hundred.
Nineteen thousand, nine hundred.
What's the chairs thing you were talking about, they're getting chairs?
Casals doing chairs, well, if they had excess money, they were gonna do chairs and table. I don't believe there'll be any extra from what I've seen.
Really?
Well, they paid for the drywall, they're having, um.
They go paint?
Alan Byer do that, they did pay for the paint.
Yeah.
And then thirty-six thousand's going to the sound system and AV and lighting. Um, so there's not gonna be a lot left, might be a little bit for some drapes or something, but there's not gonna be a lot left, so. That's one flooring issue, I brought it to the whole board there, met with them, these are the prices we have, what are we gonna do, and what aren't we gonna do? And, um, they, I think they might wanna do a fundraiser on some things in the future.
Yeah, Art's in the comment, everybody loved that, that, even if it was for.
Yeah, we've been, we.
And now they can, you know, legally go up to the second floor and look at it. But, so.
Okay, anything else, Dave? I think so, the Leo's question, still like maybe thirty to sixty days out.
As far as Mary in the library.
Believe me.
And as far as Mary in the library, I think next week sometime, we'll have enough workers out of that entrance, then they can enter through there.
Because she.
She can use her facility.
People that enter that foyer and go upstairs, but if the upstairs is mocked, they can't go any further.
Right.
And they have to come back then.
Slide me out of the instance.
And there's nothing in the room for them to get hurt on either, so, I mean, they could come in there with a, um, white trickle and light up there.
Okay. Did I answer your question, sir?
Yeah, do more than us.
Give or take, yeah.
So that's, at the top meeting, I gave them a soft opening, let Mary next week.
Yeah, that's cool, that's good.
Okay, let's go, uh, continue on, Jeff, let's talk about the mailbox items. I got a thank you note sent to the town from the Congregational Church, if you recall, we gave them, uh, um, some dollars to help with their, uh, school bank, I believe it was, and their outreach, out of our welfare line, if you remember that?
Yeah.
We got a thank you from them. I have a, uh, some would like to have appoint Laurie Lulo and to the, uh, reclamation committee, which I think they're on a good start, Town Clerk will have appointment papers next week. I don't know who Laurie Lulo, Lulo is, can you?
No family, I'm not.
Okay. I have no problem with that, I'll do a little bit about her before, uh, if we can find out next meeting, maybe she, when she comes in to be sworn in or bring it in, then we can find out what it's all about. Wishing.
Comes with a recommendation to the.
Okay.
The chair and the trimmer.
Okay.
They wanna appoint him as the secretary, so they have a listing, but they wanted to vote him out. Different assignment.
Okay. We have a, uh, a public, one of our employees, we have a email to us regarding a claim of one of our employees. Liam, could you distill that, what it's about without names?
Um, it is an old injury that requires medical attention, and we're asking the individual to, um, seek, um, attention through our doctors, private staff.
Okay.
Like a standard procedure, we're working for.
Okay, and then we have a George Duke, yeah, sorry, George, we have an email from George Duke concerning the traffic circle and the yellow flashlight around thirteen seventy-seven. I, could you respond to it, Liam, then the thing is, uh, we don't, the town does not necessarily control that intersection, it's controlled to the state level?
I did explain that, but I said the person that, he had some recommendations to add to the area, or the, if the rock above went, I referred him to Chris Brenner. Cause he's been.
No, he's been the lead, yeah, right. But the thing is, the final decision will be done by safety experts at the state level.
Yeah.
We're in a ten year plan.
Exa- exactly, in fact, we're not near the bottom, I think we're near the top, I believe.
Something.
Always.
You have us in the queue, I see.
Yes, well, the thing is, uh, as, as I was, uh, being morbid about it, what would bring us to the top, a few more fatalities, a few fatalities there, but I don't wish to have one anyway.
No, no, exactly.
But the thing is, uh, in other words, if any other intersection on the list has more safety concerns, where it'd be life, we would change the order of things being done, which would be appropriately so. And that's states called out on call. Some of those things we brought in already at, at our level, we remember the state. And one of the biggest things is, is you, is you go up the hill and it's icy and there's a rotary in the path, that means you gotta stop and slow for the rotary, and then you slide backwards. So the state's gonna have to look at that, so I agree with them.
Just remember, they changed the ten year plan every two years in the House Public Works Committee.
Okay.
Something changed.
Something's been changed.
Oh, I didn't understand, that's just from a resident.
Yes. That's a good point.
So it's the state.
No, 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 the, the state, the state's got, uh, they're, they're in the driver's seat here, as they might say, correct?
Yes.
I don't know if you wanna respond then, but a full study's been done on that.
And I told them that, and I told them the state controls, not, um, the town.
And we, we have a, a request for, uh, some reservations for the, uh, use of the town hall, and, uh, I would recommend that we take no reservations until it is complete. Agreed, Justin, we have consensus there, no reservations, cause I think, um, this group is number two, the first group is the board, and the boys don't really attack this, where they, they, they have a request.
Garden Club approaches before the boys come, one on the time.
Okay, couple comment, I'll start in the back row.
Yeah.
Wow.
I wouldn't agree with my comments.
Okay, so noted, sir.
I just wanna, Leo, update about a road situation, this week, Monday, I went over to the town of Hopkinville to a meeting.
Yes.
In regards to notice, we got of, uh.
Possible extension.
Yeah, petition, petition to do some work in Hopkinville. It, I would have bought Old Hopkin room, which is a road right after the dump, and that starts at the Hopkin and Town Line. Well, they have a petition.
I understand it stopped like two hundred feet.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'll give you the whole scenario, I'm just telling you where it is.
Okay, start there.
And it continues out as a class six road, it comes in contact with South Road.
Okay.
And a resident on that class six part is petitioning the town to turn it into a class five road. And he was, you know, some of the benefits would be, it would be a through road, which is designed in that. And, uh, I went to the, the planning board got the notice, and I told the two, and I went to them. And it was, it was a very informative meeting, I didn't state the whole thing, they were gracious enough to let me speak, even though I wasn't a resident. And I explained to them the history of the lot, and how it got to be where it was, and I said, we stock a lot, and I bet you it was a hundred and fifty feet from the property. And, uh, we, it's not paved beyond that, we turn around basically a two people's drive, which is a needed access turnaround, and paperwork is on that. And I said, we had, at this point in time, we have no reason or need to maintain it to the town line, so they'd have to wrangle with that. Their side was just a informational, we need to gather information, they weren't gonna make a decision that night, they were just gonna monitor it. And I just asked them to keep us in the, so they would, and I just wanted to share that with you guys. And depending how that works out, if it gains attraction and they move forward with it, we may have to talk about it amongst ourselves or them or whatever, but I indicated there was no need for us to do that. And, uh, so that, that maybe a situation arises, but it's just an emergency. I guess at the end of the day, this guy wants to subdivide his land, his, uh, there, public works guy gave up an estimate of like seven hundred thousand dollars to do the upgrades.
For the road.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't see the paperwork on exactly the year again, for seven hundred thousand dollars, but that was just some numbers I could borrow.
Now, in the event of cooperation, we would request money to upgrade our road if we.
Well, I, um, I don't know, I think we don't have to see how it plays out, it may be just by dying on the vine, if it goes forward, we'll have to probably meet with them and come up with some sort of.
Arrangement.
Yeah, and by the again.
We have our hundred and fifty feet there, so it's, so it's gonna be down a little bit.
The residents that I heard at the meeting weren't favorably, that were on the road, they were, they weren't interested to see it.
Well, it's a through road.
It would be a through way.
But it'd be, we're the ones that would get hurt, through way.
Exactly.
All the residents on Old Hopkin, I mean, I'm sure they wouldn't.
It's like, well, you did lines of my road when I live on, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, and I, I mean, it just. They're both class, the ones by.
Short of those people.
You can still use it now if it's passable.
Right.
Um, but I think years ago, a lot of people did, but that's kinda.
But as, I mean, if you plow that, you can actually plow the stone and leave it right there, like we do now.
Yes, yeah.
Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, it's, it's been a topic, I don't know how far it's gone, but.
Okay.
When you mentioned the property line, that's actually the town line.
Yes, town line.
Town or is it that, seven hundred and fifty feet?
Thank you for representing us.
I know, it was my, I knew it would make you. And they're, like I said, gracious, they have nice seats and that and that.
Cushion, cushion?
Yeah, just cushioned seats, and you sit in your own seat.
I have a cushioned seat.
Thirty years old, Jeff. I guess pictures of the body to hear too.
Thank you for attending, I'll get that, no problem, okay. Doctor Wood, uh, town administrator.
Okay. I'm more than helping you, Steve.
So Dave, Dave was out, uh, a little, trying to look for people on the other side of the road to take to go vote, cause he was worried about the election, never happened though, Dave, we had only, he was.
I got a couple of them.
Yeah, we had a coffee run first.
Well, Larry called the parking lot, just to make room for parking, cause we couldn't park.
But I, I saw, I saw the fire chief, I'll be like, four times he plowed that, that driveway, he was pretty good, he's a fire chief, and he was there for the meeting. Of course, hey, we're all saying, believe, we don't have to speak to chief, cause we have backup speakers, then he gets pulled out on a call.
Radio start.
But that's the law, that's your happy attendance, like.
Yeah, just, yes, just the law.
We did Woody's wife.
Woody was wife, yeah.
Nobody was there.
But it was, as I said, it was, uh, nothing terribly controversial.
Sounds like you guys is doing a good job.
Yeah.
We made it through.
Yeah. And we get, get out of there, I believe, like, before midnight. And we get, get out of there, I believe, like, before midnight, which is a record.
Get out on the car, hundred and three dollars.
We had, we had, Joe Millian wasn't there.
Oh, boy.
We were making talk about.
The floating stretcher twice.
We had, we threw some humor out there, and the humor was good, I'll leave it at that. And, uh, I was getting ready to run in case I had to, the two guys were getting on my case.
Michael's get sandwiched?
Who was gonna be sandwiched?
It'll be on YouTube, so.
It's, I, I don't know if it is. Will you allow me to be beat it for the record?
No. No.
Okay, um, gentlemen, I'm waiting, I have nothing else for the group, except, uh, well, you got your homework cut out for next week? In fact, if you got anything hard, give the lean email for next week, please.
Motion to adjourn. Also, even eleven.